Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I call to order the informational meeting of the City Council. It is February 9th, 2021. Welcome to those watching online or here in person. Let's start with the roll call of the City Council.
Council members, Brecky.
Here.
Erickson. Jensen. Kylie.
Here.
Naitzer.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Okay, very good. We have seven present at this point. The next item up is committee and commission reports. We do have a few presentations that could go on for a little bit, so I would look to see if people would be okay with starting with presentations and doing our committee reports at the end. I think we'll get to it, but then we just make sure we leave time for presenters.
That's good.
Okay, I'm not seeing any objection to that, so we will do committee commission reports at the end. Next up is council remarks. Anyone with council remarks today? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none, we're going to move on to our presentations. The first is Pavilion Agreement for the Municipal Band, and that's presented by our Director of Finance, Sean Pritchett. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, council members. Sean Pritchett, Director of Finance. I am here today to talk about the municipal band and an amendment that is being proposed to the Washington Pavilion Management Agreement. This is a required, obviously, we do a lot of informationals, but this is one thing that is required anytime we do approval of a management agreement to make sure we bring this forward to you one week in advance of that. So just a little bit of background. The council established the Municipal Band Task Force in 2020. In 2021, the Municipal Band Task Force recommended the city begin negotiations to transfer management of the municipal band to the Washington Pavilion Management, Inc. The Finance and Parks Department, having that recommendation, immediately began working with Washington Pavilion to work towards an amendment to their existing management agreement. We today have the informational, and then next week, we do intend to bring forward that amendment for action and approval by the City Council. So I just wanted to walk through kind of what some of those provisions are for that agreement. So our existing agreement with Washington Pavilion expires in two years from now, so it's a five-year agreement. So what we look to do is to add on an amendment to the existing agreement without restating the entirety of the old agreement, so it's just an additional item for that agreement. It adds one additional recital related to the municipal band, and then it adds Article 17 to that agreement, which is specific to the municipal band. Some of the provisions that are included in that, it does transfer exclusive right to manage the municipal band to the Washington Pavilion. It does state that the city will provide $112,200 in funding for the municipal band in fiscal year 2021. That's already in our current budget, so that we were able to state that. And then future obligations would be based on appropriation from the City Council, but I know the intent of that recommendation was to continue the funding at current levels or similar levels for at least two years, and certainly would look to honor the spirit of that. We require the Pavilion to track their revenues and expenses separately for the band on their internal financials, so that we would be able to have that available to us to see that specific to that specific programmatic activity. Full use of the band's personal property, such as chairs, music stands, instruments, and sheet music, all of this would remain property of the city. There would be no charge for the utilization of this for the municipal band, but the Pavilion would be responsible for maintenance of these items as part of the funding that they receive, and that they would agree to return them in similar condition to what they received them as, so in like condition. All band personnel would fall under the Washington Pavilion, so none of the band members would be employees of the city. They had been in the past. They will work directly with the Washington Pavilion, and that includes any band masters or conductors or directors of the like. They would receive first priority use of the McKinnon and Terrace Park band shells on Sundays every year, as well as the Showmobile if they schedule that prior to February 1st. Obviously, we're past that right now for this year, so but oftentimes, Parks is used to those time periods when it's utilized by the band, and I think there'd already been some kind of set-asides and communication in regard to that anyway for this year. We would have a standard charge for use of the Showmobile, so we do use the Showmobile and rent it out to other groups in the community. That amount is set by ordinance, so they would pay us for the use of the Showmobile, and that would be part of the funds that they received from the city. They could utilize their funds to help make that payment. The city would continue to maintain, store, transport, set up, and tear down as needed the municipal for municipal band performances, as they similarly do when other groups in the community rented. So it is a fairly large unit. It requires a large piece of equipment to actually move it around, so it's just best that the city continue to store, own, set up, and tear down that particular item. There is also a box truck that is primarily, an older box truck, is primarily used for the band, and so we put an option in the agreement upon request of the Washington Pavilion. They would have full utilization of that. We would ask them to maintain it, upkeep it, storage, store it, license it, and insure it. And that's not uncommon. We have several vans and so forth that we've had for the Washington Pavilion, where the city owns the band, but they maintain, license it, insure it, and so forth. So it would be very similar to that. And then, just a general catch-all provision that states that all of the provisions of that agreement apply equally to the municipal band as they do to any other function that we have with Washington Pavilion unless it's restated in the Article 17. So it's a pretty simple, straightforward agreement. Give us an opportunity to learn. We'll have two years before we have a new management agreement with Washington Pavilion, so we can kind of take up some adjustments at that time if we learn some things that we need to tweak here over the next 12 to 18 months. With that, unless, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to note for the record, just a few minutes after four, Councilor Jensen did join by teleconference, so we're all present. Questions? Councilor Erickson.
No question. Just thank you for bringing this forward right away and working with the Pavilion for that. This is a great change, and I'm excited for this opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we tried to move it forward as quickly as possible because we know there's a lot of planning and time that goes into it, and that can't really start until the agreement becomes effective, so.
Councilor Kylie.
No questions either, but I just would like to thank all involved for a job well done. I think the outcome is very good compared to with what we started with, and I believe Councilor Erickson served on the task force, as well as as Councilor Jensen, who chaired the task force. So kudos to Councilor Jensen for doing a good job, and everybody else involved. Thank you.
Questions, comments from the phone? I guess my question would be, when you look at what we had previously, is the substantive change essentially, who's essentially doing the management? It sounds like, is the funding close to the same, some of those things?
Yes, so the funding is exactly the same as what we had budgeted, other than we do allocate some of our own staff time across all of their programs, and so there's a portion of the staff time that's allocated to the municipal band because it was programmed into the budget, but that's not direct funding that would have gone toward the actual implementation of the band. It was just strictly more of a internal process where we allocate salaries, and so that part, because it wasn't directly cash related to the band, is not utilized in this case.
And you answered my other question, which is, I had written down payroll slash employees, but that question has been answered, which is however their employment works would be underneath the umbrella of Washington Pavilions.
Correct. And we have a certain amount that had been budgeted for, say, maintenance for the instruments and things of that nature, and all of that shifts towards the Washington Pavilion as well. They'll assume responsibility for that.
Okay. So all of that equipment that we own and stuff, essentially, they're, just like many other things that we have in our management agreements, they're holding it in trust for us. They take care of it, and...
Correct. But we thought it was easiest, obviously, that we just maintain ownership of it. Very similar to what we do with the Washington Pavilion for their other things, where we pay for the exhibits and they maintain them into the future.
Okay. And I will note for the public, we will have public input right after the conclusion of our two presentations, so we'll welcome input on either of these items. So I think there's a few interested parties. Okay.
Thank you.
That'll move us on to the next item, which is Sioux Falls Development Foundation and Forward Sioux Falls General Update, presented by Bob Munt, President of the Sioux Falls Development Foundation, and I see Director Ekoff stepping forward.
Quick intro. Good afternoon, Council. Jeff Ekoff, Planning and Development Services. So you may remember, we have six different entities that receive funding through our department, the Economic Development Partners. This year, we split them up. We're going to do two at a time, so over the next few weeks, you'll see all six of them. And tonight, we're going to do Forward Sioux Falls and the Development Foundation together, and Bob Munt, President, CEO, is here to present on them. So thank you.
Great, thanks. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good afternoon, councilors. Good to see you guys again. So there may be some things that are repeated in this presentation, so I apologize for that, but they're good things to talk about, so I wanted to make sure that we did that. So again, just kind of review, the Development Foundation's been around since 1950s. We started really in land development in the mid to late 1970s. We have developed what is now our ninth park in Foundation Park, so eight. Prior to that, the one that's still active, Park Number Eight, is in the northeast corner of Sioux Falls. We've got roughly 160 acres still available there, and multiple-size lots, the largest of which I think is 30 acres, and then, of course, Foundation Park, which is our newest venture that you heard about here a couple of weeks ago. Again, this is Foundation Park. You see the large portion north of the tracks there, a lot of activity on the portion south of the tracks. You can see, we've got some things kind of outlined out there, and those are very active lots at this particular point in time. A lot of activity going on out there right now with Amazon and some of the construction that you see out there. We've got some options that we're working on right now with a couple of other pieces kind of in that portion as well. So again, just a lot of activity, and we're going to see even more of that here this spring. So again, just a little bit about the history of Foundation Park. This was seen four or five years ago, and this was brought before you as kind of the next level of growth. It has not disappointed us in the expectations that we had. There's 820 acres that's available there. In Foundation Park, it is contiguous with the city limits. It has the two intersections of the interstates, BNSF Rail that runs right through the middle of it, and since the inception of this back in 2016, you can see there the number of companies and businesses that we've had there that have located there, and most of those companies, I would say right now, are in either in the middle of an expansion process or looking to expand here in the not-too-distant future. So again, it's been very active out there. It's been very constructive for us. Again, update, acres sold, 176 acres so far. We've got 56 acres there that's currently under option, 132 acres still available. Most of that is rail-served sites, so again, kind of holding those in check for those rail companies that want those. 4.7 million square feet, 309 million in investments in assessed value, jobs, 1,300, property taxes, plating fees, sewer fees, those types of things. Again, kind of looking at that ROI that's being generated out there. Our prospects really include four primary areas. Number one, the larger warehousing distribution facilities that we're looking at. Again, we're directing those to Park Eight in Foundation Park, manufacturing, processing, kind of that same thing there. They're more of our, quote, "industrial-level parks," I-2 zone parks. We also focus on bio and pharmaceutical. We are working with the Discovery District on the bio and pharmaceutical areas, kind of targeting them, working with Dr. Mark Brown out there, who seems to be a really good resource for us going forward in that area, and then the tech, cyber, and entrepreneurial area, really focusing on Zeal Center, kind of the downtown, working a lot with DSU and SDSU Engineering, some of those areas to really try to capitalize on kind of that cyber push and the intelligence and IT portion of that. We target above median wage jobs, plus we look for very competitive benefits, and then, again, just high-tech facilities, high-skilled workers. Those are the types of targets that we're looking at. Again, just a little bit about Foundation Park, the area north of the tracks, 540 acres roughly. Again, Foundation Park and the TIF, we've went over through some of these numbers here, 4,000 to 6,000 new jobs, 200 to 300 million as far as payroll projected. Again, several billion dollars in capex tax base, and then, again, the taxes generated, and we don't figure into those conversations the construction jobs and the support jobs that would be available there. So again, the ripple effect of that, we'll see for years to come. Some of the things that we've also done throughout the year, this last year, as we've all known, has just been just an incredible year that none of us anticipated. Certainly, you didn't when you got on the council, so again, thank you for your leadership through that whole timeline there, but we also did some things with our existing businesses and industries to help them get through that COVID time and to really help them to maintain what they were doing there. We helped a lot with the PPP program with our banks and making sure that our companies knew about how to access that. We created an Opportunity Sioux Falls site, which was basically looking to help people find additional employment or find employment if they had been laid off from their jobs in any, for any way, shape, or form. So we created the Opportunity Sioux Falls Network. We worked with our partners, with the Chamber, with others, the CVB and others, to really try to stimulate the economy during that time, understanding that we had to operate under a lot of, you know, rules and regulations and restrictions, but we knew we could work around that. And I got to say that, you know, the city of Sioux Falls and the partners that we have in this community, we got through it, you know, pretty nicely when you compare us to the rest of the country and some of the other areas. So I think just the partnerships that we had and our ability to work together really, really showed well for us, and we started to see some upticks in the number of companies that were looking to come to Sioux Falls, the number of people that were looking to Sioux Falls for jobs, and really not wanting to operate in the state that they were in, but looking to operate in a state like South Dakota. So again, I think some good things happened even during the time of crisis. You know, we were able to make some lemonade out of the lemons. Couple of other things, again, just the recovery, again, working with the mayor, working with the city staff, working with council, working with a number of people to really get together with our business community, to ask them, what is it that we can do for you? How can we help you to survive this particular crisis? We had focus groups of major businesses, of restaurants, of retailers, of service organizations, of manufacturing, really to try and get the best minds together in each one of those areas to find solutions to those, and then for us to be able to help implement some of those solutions. So I think, again, part of that was just the teamwork that we did, so it was a great opportunity for us to rise up. Some of this other stuff we did, again, during this timeline, we looked at COVID-19 and the governor's and the mayor's response. That's gained national attention. You all heard about that. South Dakota Sioux Falls is now on the radar, so again, the tools that we use to do that, Foundation Park, our new marketing efforts in 2020, again, filling that pipeline of companies that are looking to come to South Dakota and Sioux Falls. We did that through some co-op advertising campaigns with the state, specifically in the state of Minnesota. So if you were up in Minnesota anytime in the spring, you saw ads, you heard us on the radio. Dean Dietzick, a former radio personality, was the one who did our ads, so again, kind of have that internal talent that we can use, so that was great. Our inquiries are up about 30%. Foundation Court, we completed Foundation Court, at least roughed it in right now, and this spring, we'll be completing that with hard-surface roads, the water loop, the rough grading on the eastern side of Foundation Court as well, and then, of course, Amazon and CJ Foods have really brought national attention to us, so they're able to, we can point to them now and say, "Look, if Amazon and CJ Foods is going to come here, you should be here, too." So it's really helped us to kind of upscale our marketing a little bit more, and you'll see more of that coming out this spring. So what does this mean? The next level that we discussed back in 2016, I think we're there. So leveraging the recent developments and gives us really the tools now to move that forward, to act now, and to really paint that big picture of what our legacy can be going forward. The other part that we do that is just really top of mind right now is workforce development, and we have, I think, progressed a fair amount this last year in, again, kind of adjusting to the digital environment of workforce recruitment. A lot of the stuff we did prior to this was done through, you know, in-person job fairs, in-person events and activities and things like that. We have had to pivot that basically entirely now to do a lot more, you know, digital advertising, digital marketing, digital conferences, and things like that, and so I think we've been successful in that. I wanted to just touch on a couple of projects that are, in our mind, really kind of touching on the different levels of what we see as employment opportunities. The first is that K-12 programming, the long-term look at how do we build our workforce in the future. So things like Your Future stem in the junior highs, and now our latest program, the Career Connections Program, which basically takes at-risk high school kids and plugs them in, basically, to how their education plugs them then into the business community. So this last time, we did kind of a pilot program that was funded by the Sioux Falls Community Foundation, where we targeted 60 students and five companies, and they, all those students spent time in each one of those companies and the different departments of those companies to figure out what they do. The second part of that is happening right now, where those kids are being plugged into specific companies. They're doing internships, apprenticeships with those companies in specific areas of that company, with the option then at the end of this time where that company can either hire them as employees, they can help them with their education, push them through trade schools, colleges, whatever they want, and hopefully work for that company the whole time. So those 60 students this spring will get an opportunity to really take a look at what their opportunities are. That program next year, I just got an update on that right now. We now, and that included essentially three high schools this last year. Next year, I've got the update this morning, we've got 350-plus students that are looking at that program from seven or eight different schools. Our issue right now is we've got to come up with more companies to place those kids in, and so we're going to work on that over the next couple of months, but by next fall, we're hoping to have between 300 and 400 kids in these programs, and these are kids that may not necessarily look at moving on to college or moving on to a job after high school, and so we're able to plug them in so that they can actually see that their education is extremely important and that they're working towards some type of an end, towards employment. The second piece of that that I would touch on is the post-secondary piece. Again, our talent initiatives focus around the Talent Tours, Talent Draft Day, Talent Now, Talent Rebounds. Those are all associated with, you know, the collegiate, community, college level, and some of the alumni that are associated with each one of those particular educational institutions, and really painting the picture of what it's like to work in Sioux Falls and how we would like them to come back here or stay here once they graduate. We target specific areas for employment, you know, some of the engineering at SDSU, for example, and some of the medical and business stuff at USD and Dakota State University and places like that, but we also do a lot of just general recruiting in those alumni areas. And then the whole workplace piece of this, you know, the third phase of this is how do we engage our business community in continuous education of how to make their workplace better. So looking at things like best practices when it comes to employment, best practices when it comes to developing a culture within your particular company, and what type of culture is going to attract and keep those workers there. So looking at a best-practice routine, and part of that is our Win and Workforce Summit that we do every fall, but it's also our Recruitment Council, which meets on a regular basis to talk about those best practices. So we kind of run the gambit of that, and then over the top of all that, and that, one of the things we're really going to, you know, stress this next spring and summer and early fall, is just getting the word out about Sioux Falls and the ability that we have to create jobs and to fill those jobs. You know, we're trying to draw from a larger and larger area for those employees, and so we're kind of stepping up and ramping up a little bit more on outside advertising to bring those folks into the community, whether that would be through reaching out farther to more colleges, universities, tech schools, or whether it's reaching out to other communities within a 70 to 100-mile radius of us and asking them to come to work here in the Sioux Falls region. So again, just some numbers, I guess, when you look at the talent and workforce programs, in 2019, we had about 3,300 participants in our program. Last year, we had 6,100 in the program, so again, we're gradually making headway into figuring out how do we connect these folks with our industries. Looking at the number of, again, companies that have been involved back in 2019, you know, 23 and 98 businesses involved. Now we've got 181 businesses involved. We've got a lot of work to do in that area, bringing people on board for that, but we're really trying to now focus kind of on those mid-level and smaller companies. It's easier to get the big companies engaged because they have the resources in-house to kind of make that work. The others are a little bit slower than that. Talent Draft Day, again, this used to be an in-person event where we brought people in. We went to the Washington Pavilion. We had 400 or 500 kids there. They were, you know, getting drafted, literally, by the companies that were there. We went virtual on this this year. You can see kind of the numbers and what that means up there, but a ton of people were engaged online, and what we're finding out is that's probably the most efficient way to do it, because we get really kids from all over the country, literally all over the country, looking at this, and you'll see a slide here coming up that'll kind of show that. So this tells you a little bit about where those kids come from. In 2018, again, 198, we had over 1,000 attendees here on the virtual piece of this, and they're coming from places like California, Illinois, Maryland, New Jersey, North Carolina. I mean, we're getting looks from all these organizations and all these schools in these areas of people that want to come back here, and so our reach has really, I think, been improved as far as from a technical perspective, again, in the areas of bio, life science, cybersecurity, industrial manufacturing. Those are all areas that we're targeting with these companies, and I think that's going to continue to grow. Career Connections, as I mentioned, again, last year, we looked at about 60 students with five partners. 2021, 22, we've, and this is an old slide, we've got over 300 kids that are interested in this right now. We're looking for 25 partners to do, to do that with us, and Denise Gazetta is busy finding those companies to help us do that. Again, a lot of digital stuff. You can see there, we really try to highlight real people that are here. You probably recognize most of those people that are there. They are actual people who are working in our companies. They give testimonials in a lot of these videos that we do, a lot of the blogs that we publish, a lot of the things that we do. It's the people who work here who are talking about what's happening here. It's not me on the screen. It's not Denise. It's the people who are working in these companies, and so you can see there the number of digital impressions that are starting to rise. You know, we're seeing a lot of, you know, interest from, you know, again, Minnesota, Iowa, Wisconsin, Nebraska, some of those areas that we didn't see before. Win Engagement, again, you can see a lot of faces there that you might recognize, but really starting to highlight kind of our top areas where we're trying to recruit people. Again, a lot of those are young people, and so we're trying to really make sure that people understand that we are a great place and that we have a tremendous quality of life. So I'm going to stop there just for a minute and see if there's any questions on the Development Foundation, some of the stuff that we're doing, and then I want to touch just briefly on Forward Sioux Falls, and if there's any questions there.
Questions from the council? Anyone on the phone? Not hearing any?
Must have put everybody to sleep.
Yeah. Well, I think you've just answered every question, so.
So the other piece of what I was asked to talk about today is Forward Sioux Falls, and again, you guys have known this program much longer than I have, but Forward Sioux Falls is now in its eighth rendition. We had our, one of our meetings this morning with some of our campaigners this morning, and so it's going very well. This, as I mentioned, is number eight. We've been doing this since 1987. We are a national model for this. I think NCDS would tell you that everybody looks to Sioux Falls as kind of, you know, the model for how to do it right, and we're continuing to do that. So I want to touch just briefly on a couple of different things as we kind of move through here. So you can see kind of the progression of the employment growth here in Sioux Falls. In 1987, again, 67,000, and when you look at 2019, and we'll have the 2020 numbers here hopefully pretty soon, but basically 160,000 jobs basically created in that time period alone. 238% growth, again, 92,000 net new jobs. The MSA population-wise, if you look at it, 1987, we were 124,000. We're now at 272,000. Again, that's, I think, the last one that they did here. It was even a little higher than that. So point being, we're continuing to grow, and the nice part about this is that we're employing most of those people as well, right? So our unemployment rate remains low, but we are employing these folks. Accolades continue to roll in about Sioux Falls. Again, number one best place for small business and careers, number one city in the US for young professionals, number 10 best for the entrepreneurs, top 700 places to live, and I think we actually... best for the entrepreneurs, top 700 places to live, and I think we actually moved up that scale this last year. And then, the latest one that we had was, you know, of the MSAs, I think we're number 10 of all the MSAs in the United States for, for success and progress. So, it's just been a real fun time to kind of look at all those things and to look back at the success of Forward Sioux Falls. So, as we look forward now, you know, what are some of the new things that we're going to do? Well, first of all, our goal this, this next campaign is $15 million. That would be spread out over five years. We are well on our way towards that. We have our public opening basically on the 23rd of this month, which will, is a time that we'll actually go public and start raising money. We're kind of raising those dollars behind the scenes now, kind of the quiet phase of the campaign right now. I'm not going to spoil it for a couple of weeks from now, I'm going to let them make the announcement as far as where we're at on that, but suffice it to say, we're doing very well. We hesitated a little bit because of COVID and some of the, the stuff that was happening there. We went out to our large investors and we said, hey, you know, what do you think? Should we wait a year and kind of just, you know, not do this quite yet, let's wait a year to do that? And a resounding 100% of them said, absolutely not, let's move forward, we're not going to let this keep us back. And so, that was a great message for us to receive as we move forward and, and it's proven pretty, pretty a good decision on our part. So, what are some things that we're looking at? Housing, again, you've all heard it, housing is an issue here, we're trying to address that through the Housing Partnership, through a number of different arenas. The mayor has talked about that. We've got some legislation right now at the state level that we're trying to get from the state. It is an issue here and we want to make sure that we address that this next time around as well. The other area that we're looking at is YPN Marketing for our workforce. We have to leverage our young professionals here in this, in this city. They are tremendous individuals, they are the next generation, they are the ones that have to propel us into the next 10 or 15 or 20 years. So, we're really engaging them and we want to really leverage them also from a marketing perspective to reach out to their peers who they may have known in high school or in college or whatever and to say, look, come back to Sioux Falls, you know, you can spend time with us and be a part of us. Career Connections, I told you about, we're going to continue to grow that, so we're continuing to grow our own, if you will, within our high schools. And then, the Internship Collaborative, we're really looking to make a better splash now with our colleges and universities and our tech schools to get those interns into our businesses here so that they get the opportunity to see what we do here and by doing that, we think we can keep them here for a longer period of time and, and kind of help to reduce the number of kids that are leaving the state to work elsewhere, right? So, if we can get them plugged in and engaged here at our businesses and at our young professionals organizations, we think they're going to be able to, we're going to be able to keep them here. Again, I mentioned workforce marketing, tremendous, you know, uptick in that, so we're going to continue to push hard on that, try to take that to what we're calling the next level. We don't exactly know what that is yet, but we've got some ideas of where we want to go with that, but we just know we need to bring people here and so, we're going to really be pushing hard on that. The City Center Cyber IT Park is another concept, again, looking at what can we do to, to incent cyber IT companies to come here? Again, leveraging the reputation of Dakota State University and SDSU and some of the big educators that we have here, we think we're in a good position to do that. The Innovation Center of Excellence is really a concept, not necessarily a physical place, but it's a concept that we have of what can we do in the areas, for example, of diversity, equity, inclusion? What are some of the things that we need to do as a community to be better at that? To make sure that we are a diverse and inclusive environment here in Sioux Falls? And to take a look at, you know, what's the next level of leadership that we might need to do? What are some new ideas that we might want to explore? And so, having that flexibility to be able to do that within that Innovation Center of Excellence. And then, lastly, certainly not least, is, you know, Future Sioux Falls Strategic Plan. I think it's been 10 or 12, maybe 13 years since we've done a comprehensive strategic plan for Sioux Falls. And so, within this campaign timeline, probably in year two, maybe three, we really want to look at how do we get the community engaged in some type of Future Sioux Falls Strategic Plan? So, again, we want to take a look out from 2020, 21, 22, we want to look at 2040, 2045. What does that look like and, and what do we need to do now to prepare for that? So, with that, that's the end of my presentation and certainly be willing to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Counselor Kylie.
Bob, I will go back, first of all, good job, good presentation. And I will go back to the first part of your presentation, I just wasn't quick enough. With the Career Connections Program, you had 59 students involved last year and are we at 200 this year or you hope to be by the end of the year at 200?
So, the, for next fall, we're looking at probably close to, closer to 325 at this point.
Yeah, it's a, I mean, that is a great start and that's, so that directly involves students that are enrolled in that particular program. What, what kind of efforts have been made to contact the students that are not enrolled in Career Connections?
So, what we do, Counselor Kylie, is we work with the counselors in those schools and those counselors actually identify the kids that they believe would, would qualify for this program. They are, they tend to be, you know, kids who may not have the ability to go on after college or after high school, for example. So, we're looking at, you know, those kids that have a needs-based analysis basically based on the school, right? So, many of these kids are low to moderate income kids, many of these kids are, are non, are, are non-English speaking students and really trying to focus on those kids who really don't have a plan after high school, right? So, their junior year, they're kind of identified and then their senior year, then they participate in this program. So, again, this year, we identified approximately 60 kids in three different high schools. I think it was Harrisburg, I want to say Washington, yeah, Harrisburg, Washington and then Brandon Valley. And so, this year, we're spreading that out to, I think, eight or 10 more schools. So, again, does that kind of answer your question?
It does and I'm glad to hear that you've been in contact with the counselors throughout the, not only the city schools, but the surrounding area schools, because obviously Sioux Falls, for Sioux Falls to be successful, we have to draw from the region, especially meet our workforce needs.
Agreed.
The, so, and, and that connection with the counselors should be taking place, in my opinion, multiple times throughout the year and setting up different events. It's, it's important for you to go there versus the expectation of trying to get the students out of the building because that is so difficult anymore. It used to be that we'd had career days, but then the focus became less on taking them off campus and more on keeping them on campus. So, I would encourage, continue to encourage that. And I think there's a lot to offer to the other students involved too. I mean, we have a multitude of, of companies and careers throughout this, throughout this metro area that the more we can expose them, more likely we can keep them here in the city versus losing them.
Yep, career education, kind of that piece.
Absolutely.
You know, again, we're looking even way back in, in the junior highs, you know, sixth, seventh and eighth grade to help them understand careers, right? And what type of careers we have here. That's through our STEM initiative that we're doing there and through a couple of other programs. And there's a, there's a lot of other programs that are happening too, we're just not at the tip of the spear on those. So, they still do the, the career fairs and the college fairs and things like that, but there's others that are kind of leading those charges and we just kind of contribute where we can.
Counselor Erickson.
Thank you. Quick question for you. I noticed, I watched the legislature very closely, noticed Senate Bill 185 is a $15 million infrastructure bill for Governor's Office of Economic Development for foundation-type parks, industrial parks. How does that play into the conversation of what you're doing and Foundation Park? And is that something that you would be able to, to be able to get some funding for? Because we know there's going to be more needs of infrastructure out at Foundation Park.
Right. So, to be clear, Foundation Park is a separate deal from the $15 million that's at the legislature.
Yes, yeah, I realize that, yes.
So, the $15 million that we're asking for really is, is for potentially development in, let's say, Foundation, let's say, Park Eight, for example. So, if we have to put in streets and sewers there. It's also for potentially the Discovery District. How can we help the Discovery District be more successful? Potentially downtown, you know, development, those types of things. How can we stimulate downtown development using those funds? We may look at, you know, potentially some workforce programs and things like that. We're, we're still kind of vetting that out, but, you know, we, we were asked to submit some proposals to, you know, to them for what we would use money for and that was seen to be a logical place to be.
Is that, is that, I, maybe I didn't, just to be clear, is that for Senate Bill 185 or is that a different component for what you just referred to? Sorry.
Senate Bill 185, is that the economic development? I, I get my numbers.
Yeah, that's, here, I have it on my phone.
Because there's a, there's a housing bill out there too and there's.
Yeah, no, Senate Bill 185 is the governor's bill that deals with, sorry, I'm trying to make my phone bigger here, economic development purposes for industrial development. It's a grant program, grants to any industrial, industrial development corporation that's going to make infrastructure improvements in the industrial parts. So, is that in Sioux Falls? Will that be an additional to what you're referring to? Not talking about the TIF at all, just this particular bill I, I found was fascinating because I thought, gosh, this would help immensely for these grants and if that's something, now, it has to work through the whole process, it has to get signed into law, I mean, it's a ways down the road, but if that's an opportunity for the Development Foundation, I mean, great things could happen. So, I just wasn't sure if you were in collaboration with that in hopes that this could certainly help the park too.
We are. Our intent is not to use that in Foundation Park though, our intent is use that outside of Foundation Park.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So, kind of two separate things. The, the TIF is, is helping us with Foundation Park and, and, you know, we don't want to confuse the two, so.
No, and that's not, I wasn't asking about the TIF, I was more or less asking about that Senate Bill 185 and how that would play into the conversation of Foundation Park. So, sorry, I didn't probably ask my question very clear.
Fair game here.
Yes, thank you.
Others on the phone?
Counselor Chair.
Counselor Breckie.
First of all, Bob, again, thanks for the presentation, great presentation. I do agree that the, having Amazon come and the, the expansions that are already going on out at, at Foundation Park really are indicators that the future looks very bright out there. The question that I have is, you know, and I think, you know, we've talked and I think, you know, there's just a good chance that it could, that opportunities could explode out there, which is of course why you guys are moving forward with the TIF to try to prepare the rest of the area to be sold. But the question that I have, you know, obviously, and you've demonstrated this, it's going to have a huge impact on the city of Sioux Falls. So, to me, it's really important at this juncture, and I think we're at a crossroads, that the businesses that come here have really, really good salaries and good incomes for the employees that they bring with them or that, that will come as a result of them. And so, I want to ask you, what do you do, or what are you doing when you are enticing businesses here? How do you look at them to try to make sure that the average wages, you know, of these employers as they come to this city are sufficient to move these people, you know, into the middle-income category? Because as we develop this whole entire area with the kind of impact that's going to have, if we settle for anything less out there, all we're doing is bringing more people into the community that are going to, that are going to need our benefit system. So, how do you guys do, when you're doing your job, how do you try to scream these or try to entice those companies to really bring, bring the very best wages and salaries, you know, into our community?
Yeah, Counsel Breckie, thank you very much, I appreciate that question. So, our vetting process is pretty intense, actually. We, we get a proposal or we get an RFP into us, one of the first things that we do is to look at things like salaries, like capital investment, like number of employer, employees, type of industry that it is, we look at their manufacturing processes, you know, is it highly mechanized, is it robotics? One of our targets is advanced manufacturing and so, we, we take that to heart. We want to make sure it's advanced manufacturing and that, you know, you don't have people, you know, standing there moving, you know, moving product, but you have people there that are, you know, working with computers to, to program robots to move product and those types of things. So, we look at, at those things moving forward, we look at the stability really of the company. Is it a company that's been around a while? Do they have other plants around the country? Do they have success stories that, you know, we can look at? Do they have individuals perhaps that, you know, in that community where they may already be located that we can call and say, hey, are they good corporate citizens? Do they pay good benefits? You know, do they take part in community activities and contribute? I mean, that's all part of our vetting process as we move forward because anymore, it used to be, you know, back when I started in this, in this profession, you didn't really ask those questions. I mean, you took what you got, you know, and when it came to the table, it was like, yeah, we'll take that, we really don't care what it is. Well, in Sioux Falls, because you guys have done such a great job of, of creating the environment that we have here, we now have the ability, you know, to pick and choose, quite frankly, and to look at what is it that they're going to bring to the community to enhance what we already have. So, the vetting process that we go through is, is relatively complex and, again, we, we try to get to those higher-paying jobs so that, that rising tide will lift all boats and, and sometimes we get in trouble for doing that because some of the companies that can't necessarily, existing companies that can't necessarily afford to compete don't like that so much. So, you know, it's kind of a two-edged sword sometimes.
Thank you for that answer. That's really what I was hoping you would say because I too remember a time when we were just so excited to grow that, I guess, we, we weren't out in front of it far enough to understand that growth for growth's sake really wasn't a good thing. And I think you're exactly right. We're smart enough about that now and we're in a position now where we can be scrupulous. So, tagging on to that, one more question about the Discovery District and what they're doing out there. To my thinking, and, and I heard you say you want to help them as much as you can, from what I've heard and my understanding, those are exactly the kinds of, that is exactly the kind of industry we should be getting into, biotech and like you said, the, you know, the electronic kind of manufacturing, those kinds of things. Talk a little bit more about that and what opportunities you see out there, you know, to, to really create a niche in those kinds of areas and, and, you know, kind of, you know, kind of drive things in that direction.
Yeah, I think, I think we have some good opportunities out there. Again, Dr. Mark Brown, I think, is, is really a class act and I think Mark's got some contacts that I think over, over the next year or two, we can really capitalize on. We kind of got to get that, that first shot in the arm, if you will, out there and we're kind of, you know, struggling a little bit with that, but I think we've got some plans for that area. The thing with biotechnology and the bioscience area is that, you know, unless you're a, you know, a Pfizer plant or a Johnson and Johnson plant, you know, we're probably looking at, you know, the smaller-scale research and development types out there, maybe the 15, 20, maybe 30-person operations, research facilities, but then production may follow that. So, once we kind of build that momentum and kind of build that synergy out there and become known as kind of a biotechnology area, I think we have the opportunity to bring some of those larger manufacturers to town. But right now, I think we're just trying to develop that critical mass out there of, of research and development and the type of things that we need in order to kind of grow from, from, from the beginning. SAB Biotherapeutics is a great example of that, you know, and how long it takes to kind of nurse that process along. Alumend is another one, you know, they've been working on that project for several years. But as we continue to grow those, I think we'll see some synergy out there that will hopefully help us to develop that whole area out there. It's a great concept, I just think it needs a little bit of time to develop.
Thank you, great answers.
You're welcome, thank you, Janet.
Okay, next up, Counselor Jensen, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. President Munt, you and I have talked a lot this week, which I'm very thankful for and I was kind of just digging into some of your numbers that you're tracking, you know, really well. And one of the things that, you know, I'm really excited that Forward Sioux Falls is going to be taking on is the housing, you know, crisis that we actually do have in, in town. If you look at the South Dakota Multi-Housing Association survey that just came out here this last week, you know, you have a vacancy rate of 6.64%. That's full, that, that's full occupancy in our, in our multi-housing. It's incredible the amount of units that have come online. If you look at it in 2021. If you look at it in 2019, 2020, and, you know, my assumption is 2021 will, will equal 2020, we're going to have, you know, just shy of 4,000 units coming online. But if you look at the population growth here in 2020, you know, at 5,100 people, and you look at just an average growth rate, you know, if you look at your slides that you, you sent over, you know, that's 35, 50 per year. We are still going to be needing housing for all of these people, no matter what types of jobs you're bringing in. And I know that the planning between, you know, our city and, you know, these Ford Sioux Falls and the Development Foundation is, is happening, but I think this is probably one of the bigger things that we as a council and, you know, I think the city is going to be looking for, because it's not just an affordable housing crisis, there's just no housing. There's 151 houses on the market right now, single family in Sioux Falls. So as we think about moving our city forward and planning it effectively like we all want to do, I mean, that just has to be one of the things we, we follow up, you know, our jobs claims with. And I know that's at center focus for you, and I just want to thank you in front of everyone for making that a priority.
Yeah, one would think housing would not be a complicated issue, but it absolutely is. And now, when you add in, you know, the, the cost of materials that is going into housing, it's becoming more and more complicated. So we need to work together to develop a solution, whether it's as Sioux Falls or as a state, to, to really get more housing. It's tough to, you know, recruit people when you don't have housing, right? So we have to address that, we understand that, and we're looking forward to working with you guys to hopefully make that work.
Very good, other questions? I'll just say, I, I was also glad to hear that you're working with, with school counselors, because that was going to be my question, is were, were they being engaged to, because they'd be perfect to identify the exact sort of kids you'd be looking for. Something else I was curious about was, one thing you'll hear from, for example, the home builders yearly, is that they really, really need more kids to get into the trades. And in fact, you know, they'll give out scholarships each year to a handful of kids so that they can go to school and they can get in the trades. There, there are, I'm sure, a numerous amount of kids who, I, I don't know if, if characterizing them is at risk, but they would be the sort of kids that, that would say that they'd be very hard workers, but they would just say, I'm, I, I, I'm not into, you know, the book learning stuff, I don't want to work in an office. They would love to work with their hands, and, but, and we have all of these home builders, we've got electrical companies, plumbing companies. Are you looking at anything or working on, on things like that, where you can identify kids like that and get them connected, where they could maybe, you know, tag along with a journeyman plumber or whatever it may be, and, and try some of the different trades? And maybe they find out the tech school is their way to go? So just.
Yeah, we, we are working with that, that group. One of our five participants in the Career Connections is Muth Electric. Again, so, again, we're, we're trying to get into that particular realm. Absolutely understand that every kid is not going to go off to a four-year college. We know that. And so we're looking, you know, partnerships with STI, Mitchell Tech, Lake Area, Southwest Tech over in Minnesota, Northwest Iowa Tech. I mean, we're not just focusing on South Dakota, we're, we're kind of looking out at that 60 to 100 mile radius, saying, where are these kids? Where can we get them from? And, and what's, what's the specialty of that tech school? Is it electronics? Is it wind energy? Is it plumbing? What is that? And trying to really identify those and then reach out to them individually and say, look, we've got jobs here in Sioux Falls, and here's how you connect to these employers. And so that's part of that electronic stuff that we do, is making sure that those kids, if they're wanting to come to work for us, they can connect through the electronic means. So that, that is a huge part of, of what we do, and, and I would say, you know, quite frankly, probably surpassing, you know, the four-year institutions anymore, you know, people wanting to do that. And we do tend to target, you know, some of the high-risk areas as well, just to make sure that, you know, we give them options. So that's part of the plan, but all in all, we'd love to have every one of our high school students stay here and work. That would be great.
Good. Last question. A, as it relates to housing, it's going to be a multifaceted, you know, ongoing work. Has there been any interest or discussion with the major employers, including those who may be looking to come to town? They're going to, you know, if they're going to need several hundred workers, things that they may be able to do in terms of helping, whether it be to build housing or have some sort of thing where they help with the cost of, of housing, you know, I, whatever it may be, you know, and it may be more apartment units or?
We haven't had that conversation yet. What we're trying to do is to kind of establish this housing fund and then kind of decide how it is we're going to continue to fund it and perpetuate it, and that's where our employers may come in with opportunities there. So I don't know how that's going to shake out yet. We're working with, you know, Mr. Eckhoff and, and the mayor and others to try and figure out what is the best solution to help our developers develop the type of housing that we need, you know, you know, what type of things do we need to do to make that more pliable for them? So, you know, that's a conversation we want to have, but we have thought about that, we've talked a little bit about it. Lot of options out there, you know, there's a lot of stipulations and regulations and all that kind of stuff that you have to work around, but I think if we all work together, we can get that done.
Sure, might be an interesting, that there may be a partnership opportunity.
Yeah.
They have an interest in, in having their, their employees housed, too, so.
Absolutely, and, you know, there was a program several years ago in Newton, Iowa, when Maytag was still there, they, they partnered with the city and built houses as part of their operation. So it's been done in the past, and we can, you know, hopefully use that model and tweak it to fit us.
Okay, great. Thank you for the comprehensive presentation.
Thank you, guys. We'll probably see you again next week, so good to see you, guys.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, that finishes up presentations. Before we go to public comment, let's swing back to committee and commission reports. The first is South Dakota Municipal League Board of Directors, Counsel Erickson.
Thank you. Last week, I was gone again. I had municipal league board meetings in Pierre and traveled to Pierre. So just giving you a quick update on that. The majority of our meeting was spent on talking about the bills that are going through the legislature that the municipal league is working on, followed by talking about our conference that will be held in October in Spearfish. After that, I did have an opportunity to present to the municipal league on a project that Tom Greco and I recently worked on. I often joke about being a recovering revenue agent or a former revenue agent, and when we had an annexation, I asked some questions to Tom about how do we report these to the Department of Revenue to ensure that we're getting our appropriate tax? And so Tom walked me through the process, we sat down, noticed some areas of improvement and worked through with Director Eckhoff and Director Pritchard, some areas that we can ensure that the reporting is being done accurately to the Department of Revenue and really understanding their process. When a Department of Revenue agent goes in and does a review, the only time that they can pick up the sales tax is if it's in that database. And so we wanted to make sure that database was as accurate as possible. We did a few Zoom calls with the Department of Revenue, as well as finance and planning. We've worked with GIS to come up with a streamlined plan. And truly, if it wasn't for the research that Tom did, which was obviously incredible, he's great at that stuff, and working with Director Pritchard as well as Eckhoff, we came up with a really great solution. So I was able to present that to the municipal league board and ensuring that every municipality has the correct database, if you will, when collecting city sales tax. Since that time, we've had the opportunity to start the conversation and help Aberdeen and also Yankton, as well as a few other municipalities that have some questions on how we did what we did. On top of that, we're going to be presenting at municipal league conference in October and really just making sure, like I said, it's really a fairness and an equity thing, if you will, throughout the state of South Dakota. We work in silos oftentimes, and so if we can be a partner to the rest of the cities in the state, as well as building those connections and relationships with the state of South Dakota, with the Department of Revenue, it just makes good streamlined process. So I did that presentation, and then we closed the meeting. And with that also, I did let the board know that we, as a council, have talked about traveling to Pierre for February 24th and 25th to really meet with legislators and build those connections as bills continue to go through there. So they are willing and ready for us to come when, when comfortable for those who can attend. That was really the gist of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I move on to clarify, would, would this be the process so the Department of Revenue is notified when land is annexed so that city sales and other taxes are remitted?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, so oftentimes, we, what we did, I don't know, three, four weeks ago, is what sparked the question. I asked Tom, I said, you know, we're annexing 40 acres in, but there won't be addresses on those for maybe two years, three years, four years, 10 years, in some cases, depending on what part of those developments are done. And so as we talked through that, we started looking at the state's database to making sure that it mapped out on our GIS maps and ensuring that the actual address or the street changes that also take place are uploaded in that streamlined sales tax database. That's where, per state law, online businesses are held harmless as far as if they are audited and those addresses are not included in the database, they will not have to remit the sales tax, and an auditor can't pick up that sales tax for the city. You'll automatically be charged the four and a half state tax, but you might not see that 2% if we're not accurately reporting. And so we had just amazing conversations with our technology, our mapping at our GIS is incredible. It is, you know, Tom tried to pull up a few other cities to see who does it kind of like us. He, he found Aberdeen was kind of similar, so he was able to run the same queries and maps to see where they were at. And so it was just kind of stepping through that process. And so it will be something that the municipal league will take up and continue to work with every municipality. Also, Tom has been incredible in saying that he would be happy to help. Matt Tobias has been kind of boots on the ground and the one also working with the state to making sure that all those GIS maps are matching the state's maps.
Great, because if it's not updated, you could literally lose a year of sales tax and never get it back, because you can't go recapture.
Right, because it, our sales tax, streamlined sales tax is only for that database. So whatever is in that database, that's really the bible of city sales tax, if you will. Now, I will say, most companies use really big sophisticated databases and, and software that don't do it on their own, but you never know. And so it's just important to have that information up to date. And it's, again, it's about good government and making sure that that process is accurate for everyone across the state and really a fairness issue, if you will.
Interesting, okay, well, thank you. Next up, Suland Heritage Museum Board, Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the, the exciting things, and you'll see it in the end of the year report when Director Hoskins from the museum system comes to us, but I, I, I think it's so exciting that the endowment fund for the museum system is just short of $2 million. So in the short time that I've been on the council, they've seen some amazing donors step up, and, you know, it's one of those goals that, you know, especially for a museum system, that their endowment fund starts to make a real impact on their budget and the, the programming that they do, as we see fewer and fewer public dollars allocated for museums in history, that these kind of organizations get the chance to really prove to donors how important it is to be part of their program. So it's an exciting process, and you'll see that in the annual report from Director Hoskins here in the next, I'm trying to remember exactly when he comes with that report, but also as part of the budget process. The other thing that Director Hoskins has, has done a really good job of is taking a look at the facilities of the museum systems. One of the things we talked a lot about with the new Irene Hall Resource Center was getting a lot of the weight out of the buildings, because the collection had become so massive that that poor old building, I think, had a little sigh of relief when some of that was taken off of it. So the structural engineer made their annual visit, and so we just got the report back from them, some things of maintenance-wise. But the, the facilities committee for the board spent some time just getting that initial impression from the, the structural engineer and what is needed to keep the building up to date for the next year or 10 years, to put a 10-year plan together. In February, towards the end of the month, that same facilities group is going to do a tour of the Pettigrew home and again, put together a capital plan for 10 years of what maintenance and what things that are going to be required coming forward. So really taking a look at the infrastructure of the system. And, and I think, thirdly, they'll, even though the, the new resource center is brand new, it, it's already into that part of starting to take a look at repairs and updates and maintenance, things that continue to go. I continue to say to my part, plant more trees out there. Anytime that you've been out there, we, we added some extra money for trees, but it's time to, that entire area, well, our entire community needs more trees, so. The other thing that's coming up that I think you'd be interested in is that the Mountain Plains Museum Conference is back on for September. So they're anticipating somewhere between 350 and 500 museum professionals from the central part of the country will be here in Sioux Falls. It'll draw, it's the first time that it's been here, and they've done a really good job of putting different groups together and touring our museum facilities within an hour or two around Sioux Falls. Both the universities, the University of South Dakota and South Dakota State are included on that, but the museums that are here in our community getting a chance to, to do that. And really, there'll be some national media that comes with that or writers, museum-type publications will be there, so we'll get a chance to attract that. And then something that really you can put on your calendar, 2024 is the 50th anniversary of the Suland Heritage Museum System. So it'll be something that you'll see in the next few years, planning to, to really celebrate that. And 2026 is the 170th anniversary of Sioux Falls. I just wrote that down because I thought it was kind of interesting, so, thank you.
Very good, very interesting. Up next, Tut Hill House Resource Group, Counsel Brecky.
Thank you, Council Chair. We did meet again on February 4th and really discussed and began to define the scope of the project, which will be, you know, enhancements to the exterior and interior of the house, as well as enhancements to the garden area and a patio area to replace the deck. And that's really what we're looking at, you know, as the total project. And again, we've broken into three committees, and each committee has had a meeting and they reported on what they're doing. What's going to happen next is the city is going to hire an engineer to evaluate the structure of the house as we, you know, start to get cost estimates. The first thing we just need to know is, is, you know, as we start to take things apart, it's hard to do cost estimates until you know whether you're just restoring something or replacing it. But the intent is to restore the house, you know, into a, you know, real similar condition as to what it would have looked like, like when it was originally constructed. However, because of its commercial use, there will be commercial enhancements that just make it more usable and functional, you know, in a more modern format. So it's really exciting. The, the design committee has been working really hard on a PowerPoint presentation that they will be giving to the full council on March 2nd, where you will be able to have 3D, you know, viewing of before and after, what the proposed enhancements will look like and what it looks like now. And it's, it's really come together very nice. It was presented to the council, or it was presented to the full committee at, at February 4th meeting, and everybody was pretty excited to see, you know, what, you know, what the proposals, the proposed design improvements will look like, both inside and outside the house with that 3D format. So we look forward to sharing that with you. I think you'll really enjoy it. The gifting committee has, has been working on coming up with what kind of an agreement we'll need and who to have the agreement with. And it looks as though the best way to do it is going to be able to create a neighborhood association that will be the owner of the gift and then donate it to the city of Sioux Falls. And so they're in the process of creating the Tut Hill Park Neighborhood Association, which we think is an exciting opportunity for that neighborhood, just for in the future. You all know on the council, some of the different neighborhood meetings that we go to on the night out event, and, you know, it, it's just a really good thing, and, and I think that is evolving from this, which is just kind of an extra benefit, I think, for that community. And I'm looking forward to the, the Tut Hill House maybe someday being a hub for some. And I'm looking forward to the, the Tut Hill House maybe someday being a hub for some of their activities. The fundraising committee is, is off and running. And for anyone's input that's listening or watching, you can go on the website at tuthillhouse, That's tuthillhouseparkrestorationproject.org. And you can, you know, see the, the website and it's also on, it has a Facebook page called Tut Hill Park House Restoration Project. And there's some wonderful pictures that show how it's been used and, you know, some of the history that we're trying to preserve with the project is, you know, related as well. They sent out a fundraising letter last week and are busy dividing up and having actual interviews and personal meetings, you know, asking for funds. And initially, they got a couple of nice donations to kick it off, and so things are, are going well in that direction. And, and they're, you know, anxious to see what kind of response they will, will get from the letter and with the follow-up meetings that they've kind of divided up amongst themselves as a group and have begun having with members of the community. I think that's all. Again, we, we expect to have a, a full meeting with the committee again on February 22nd. On February 24th, 600 or more postcards went out from the, the park department to have a meeting to share the proposed improvements with the neighborhood. And for anyone that would like to attend that, it's going to be located February 24th at 6:00 PM at Prairie Green Clubhouse in a live format. But there will also be, it will also be put on a video on the city's website that people can respond to so that we can get a full amount of feedback, feedback on, you know, what's being proposed. And then again, on March 2nd, we are on the informational council meeting at 4 o'clock at Carnegie, and we will be giving you a full detailed presentation by each of the committees will present in person to you on that day.
Okay, great report. I just happened to be on the Facebook page last night. Lots of exciting stuff. Thank you very much. Next up is public comment. Anyone who'd like to comment on anything we talked about today, about five minutes? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, I'm going to look for a motion. Yes, Council Kylie.
Make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of consulting with legal counsel or reviewing communications from legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation or contractual matters pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 12523.
That motion to enter executive session made by Council Kylie, seconded by Erickson. Roll call vote, please.
Council members, Breckie? Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Aye.
Yes.
Nicer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero. We are moving into executive session. We need to clear the room. Thank you very much.